Roll call please.
Jeffrey Mason.
Here.
Danny Garh.
Here.
Sean Hamilton.
Here.
Quinn Harmon.
Here.
Cindy Klein.
Here.
Steve Rogers.
Here.
Ken Miller.
Here.
Wes, please. Welcome, everybody. It's always nice to meet people who are new, so we're always glad to have them here. And I will go over to Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. So tonight, we're fortunate. We have a couple of our National Board Maintenance Certificate ladies with us as well as Ms. Ambigna, who runs the program for us. As boards aware, it's a very grueling process. And these ladies not only did it once, but they decided to go back and do it again to get it. And I'm not going to steal thunder from Mrs. Ambigna. But I'm very excited they're here. When she contacted me and let us know they did this. It was great. It's something that we put in, like I said, we, the board, put in at the last negotiations as an incentive for them to partake in it. And so that being said, Mrs. Tricia Tulia, Mrs. Angie Phillips, both went through this process and passed. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Ambigna.
You can stay wherever you want. Okay, so I am Pam Ambigna, and recently Angie Phillips and Tricia Tulia did what we call our Maintenance Certification. So tonight, I just wanted to kind of update you on the status of our National Board Teachers at Coal City District. So, Mr. Smith, if you could go to that first slide. So at the present time, we have eight current National Board three to five teachers. Part of the revision in 2016, when they revised the process, was that instead of waiting every 10 years, the certification is good for five years. And then they do what we call Maintenance Certification, and that's what Angie and Tricia did this year. We also have Amy Seakin, Jean Cripple, and Emily Hayes participating in that right now. Then we have Amy Ren, Marty Egan, and Belinda Egan, who are in the five-year window that they're not doing anything right now. But we also have six candidates right now that will receive their complete scores in December. So the six candidates, I just met with them for two hours tonight, are working hard on completing their Component Two and Component Four parts of their National Board Certification. I do want to express a special thanks to Mr. Spencer for always supporting us and believing in the National Board Program. I do really feel, I believe in the process. After 14 years, I'm still coming, and I'm still hoping that somebody steps up in my spot eventually. But I really enjoy still being connected to Coal City. I've been here 33 years, and it was nice that I come back and I get to visit with my colleagues. I also would like to take a chance to thank the board for putting it into the contract language. Because I feel that in the state of Illinois, we have some of the best incentives for people to complete their National Board Certification. So National Board Certification is kind of what board certified doctors are or certified public accountants. You don't have to have that certification to be an accomplished teacher. But you've proven that you know what it takes to be an accomplished teacher. Our five core propositions, which all our standards in our portfolios are based on, are showing that we are committed to our students, every student and their learning. We know our subject areas, and we know how to teach those subjects. We're responsible for managing and monitoring our student learning, which our testing center really helps us out by giving them that data and teaching us how to analyze that data and improving further instruction, which goes into Proposition Four, that we're reflective about our practice. We think about what happened that day. We hold on to what went well, but we also acknowledge what we could have done better and in the hopes of improving our future instruction. And then Proposition Five, we're learning members of a community, and we help each other, and we support each other, and we learn new things, and, you know, we're all in the same boat, trying to get to the same place, improve student learning. So the National Board process, which those other six candidates are working on right now, is a two-year process with completing two components one year and two components the next. Last year, our candidates went to a testing center and it tested their content knowledge. And last year, they also videotaped their classroom for environment and their instruction, to analyze environment and instruction. One thing I do want to say about people that decide to take this journey is that you are putting your instruction out there for, you know, to analyze the strengths and the weaknesses and say, I can do better. I can, I can improve my student learning. This year, they're looking at the two components. One is differentiating instruction, which has them looking at their work samples, analyzing how their kids do, and explaining how they can move individuals forward that might not be in the bulk of the average. And then effective and reflective practitioner, I stimulate to student growth. It's looking at how you measure the growth of students as a class, but also how you measure the growth of yourself and always looking for that professional growth. So that's what those other six candidates are doing. Go ahead, Mr. Smith. What Angie and Tricia did this last year, which is our first, they are our first two candidates to do this as they went through what we call Maintenance of Certification. It's a one-year process. It's two components, but it's focusing on professional growth experiences. They've shown that they know what accomplished teaching looks like. They've provided evidence that they were accomplished teachers. And this is their way of showing that they keep those five core propositions in their mind as they go into future practice. So they picked two professional growth experiences, and then one, they showcase within a video, and they talk about how it impacted their own practice and the kids' learning. So always with the goal of improving student learning is the goal of National Board. Tonight, we are here to congratulate Angie and Tricia, and I asked them if they could do a short reflection, just because this is... Believe me, it's short. We teach first graders. We like short speeches. But yes, again, they are our first two candidates through it, so I just asked them for a short reflection of their thoughts.
And I have mine written down. If you guys are six and seven-year-olds, I would not have to have this. The National Board process has helped me grow as an educator. The process has helped me analyze and reflect on my instruction. Through this process, I can identify the needs of my students and use the data to improve instruction. I had to write about two professional growth experiences Pam talked about and report a lesson of the experience and analyze the video. My two professional growth experiences was improving science, improving reading through the science of reading and improving social emotional learning. With our new contract language, which we thank you guys for, internal credits are given for this maintenance process and to me, this is more meaningful than taking a college course. The National Board uses it in the classroom. So we loved it. Pam is wonderful to have. I don't know if I would have done it without her. I appreciate her so much.
I just wanted to thank you all for giving us this opportunity. It was a fantastic learning experience. I was able to use the National Board and also the letters training that you provided the year before to combine together to have the success. So in all of that, made me make a teaching change. So I've changed to a reading specialist since then because I felt like I could reach some of our struggling ones. So it really made a big impact for me. Thank you so much.
Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. We're living that way. So first of all, congratulations, ladies. Thank you, Mrs. Ambigna, for continuing this process and improving the amount of student learning that happens. I think these two ladies have said it right there. And how they reflect is a process that I think is really valuable for our kids in our district. But just as a little show of our appreciation and recognition of it, we did get some tumblers here for it to National Board Certified. Mr. Miller has for you, but thank you again, ladies, and continue to share that information with others because I think it's a great process.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We are so glad to be able to do this for you and to have you participate in this program for helping our students is wonderful. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So if you remember the last board meeting, this isn't on the agenda, but the last board meeting, we had, Mrs. Kenny went over our summits of designations, and we had two of our schools get exemplary. And these ladies don't know they're getting called up, so. We had Representative Jason Bunting provides a certificate, certificates for them that acknowledges the fact that they improved, that they accomplished that. And so with that, we have the certificates here, excuse me, certificates here to hand them. So congratulations. There were two of our buildings that received exemplary. Again, the other three did wonderful, commendable. But they did receive that. So congratulations to Mrs. Trotter at Elementary School and Mrs. Prosser.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. You guys' hard work again. We appreciate all that you do and all the things that you do for our kids. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Wes, you got a thank you note, do you not?
Yes, I do. We've got a thank you note from the Donna Catlin family for beautiful flower arrangement that was sent regarding Lawson.
Just for the board, there, down is sodium bars and her mother passed away. Give these skills.
If you want to pass that around, the board members can take a look at it. Okay, is there any communication from the floor regarding agenda items or anything in general? And hearing done, then I will ask the board, are there any items that the board would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing done, then I will let it take a first and second motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes in both session minutes in the original meetings on December 4th, November Activity Fund reports, November Treasuries reports, December Monthly Check, monthly manual checks reports, December payrolls, January accounts payable, and personnel items, including approval of resignations, employments, extra particular assignments, and job descriptions. Dan, so moves and Quint seconds. Roll call, please.
Danny Garh.
Yes.
Quinn Harmon. Jeffrey Mason. Cindy Klein. Yeah, Steve Rogers.
Yes. Yes. Any questions about the administrative process? We've got them all here now. Got them all here for questions. So any questions about those? Anybody have any? Then we'll move on to Student Services. Luke, anything? Any questions of Luke's report? All right, hearing done, then Jim? Anything you'd say? Any questions about the curriculum report? All right, Mr. Spencer, we're up to you.
All right, just a quick update on the intermediate school options and how things have been going. Just a reminder, we have a report of our two town hall meetings next Wednesday at 7:00 at Academy Auditorium at High School. That'll be again at 7:00, open to anyone that wants to join us. I know they have an article in the paper this week. It's right in front of the page, so that's great. I'm hoping to get a great turnout for that. And we'll go over the intermediate school situation, options of what we've been presented with, and then also do a little Q and A if they have some questions. So that'll be next Wednesday, and the next one will be online Wednesday at 7:00 still at the high school. So we received a few different concepts from our architects. They gone over with Facilities Improvement Committee. We also talked with the board leadership on those. These are some of the options that I'll show the committee at the town hall meetings. We're still trying to get the burn cost figures. We don't have those yet, but they're just options at this point. There may be another option that comes out this whole meeting. So just wanted to share that with the board and be glad to answer any questions if there are.
Board members, anybody have any questions?
The next thing is Responsible Bid Ordinance. If you remember, we had a team of members of our local contract unions come. And Jason and I met with a couple of them that approached us to represent us with the Responsible Bid Ordinance from another school district. And they signed with the Will County, Grand County Building Trades Council. This document has been shared with the board. It's actually in your traffic there. If you'd like to take a look at it. Essentially, this creates a local construction policy that establishes criteria and verifiable standards for contractors bidding on public infrastructure projects. A lot of communities do this as far as townships and villages. If you do have questions or comments, please let me know. We're collecting those still at the time. We also have another group that we might be busy with to see what options they have. So just wanted to share that and let the board know on the process right now on that, to be allowed to answer any questions.
Would you have any questions on that?
Last thing I have then was, I was asked, actually during the school board conference, to join the ISA, which is the IESA School for Advanced Leadership Group. It's an 18-month progress, or process. There are a few ties or may posts, a couple conflicts, but I think I can work through those. I spoke with Mr. Miller and Mr. Hamilton about that, and me getting started on it is a process that's going to improve what I do, which will help the district because it's a long, long way. The meetings are down in Springfield. It's an 18-month process, as I said. But I'm very excited about it. It's eight sessions over that 18 months. If you ever have a question about this, let me know. Be glad to entertain any questions this time.
We hope we got you in.
Yes, appreciate that. Appreciate the letter for that. Thank you.
Any questions about that or any concerns about that? I think it's only going to make us better. Only going to make us better as a board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Dan, anything with GABC?
No, sir.
All right, very good. Any questions about the Athletic Directors Report? All right, again, I will ask if there's any communications from the floor regarding the agenda. All right, again, I will ask if there's any communications from the floor regarding agenda items or anything in general. And hearing done, then let's take a look at the whole business. Okay, board policy. You want to add anything? Yeah, peruse the motion.
Yeah.
I want to entertain first and second motion to approve the revised district policies as presented. Sean so moves and Quinn seconds. Roll call, please, a woman.
Sean Hamilton.
Hold on. Do you wanna say something? Yeah, start with it. Hold that vote.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Spencer.
Yep, so Steve and Cindy and I got together and went through. There was quite a few of these new policies and revised policies this time. There's a copy of someone saying important ones in there. I am not gonna go through every one of these with you. But just to give you a quick summary, again, appreciate their effort to sit there and listen to me go through these. A lot of these were just changing the footnotes and putting things up to code. But a couple of things that I wanted to hit on was two colon 120, Board Member Development. This added training on improving student outcomes. And so Mrs. Kenny and I have visited and we're working on putting that together to get to the board. And it would be another GCN training we'd have you, have you been watching. Also, school district has to make reasonable efforts to provide training to all school personnel, school board members, and school resource officers on suspension and expulsion of students. And we're working on putting those together and we'll have those sent out to you and be watching over here. So that's one of the, that's on the front page there. I'm gonna skip down to four colon 150. This is the facilities management and building. It's on the same page. They updated this to, the framework is don't want to be the purchase or construct or build of a building or classroom or instructional use. If prior to the building purchase, the board adopts a resolution, finding the billing or purchase will result in increase of pre-K or kindergarten space in the district. So essentially, tells you that if we're adding somehow to our kindergarten school, we don't have to pass for a freedom. Recommend that. There's some other things that go into it, but essentially that's kind of the bar and scope of it. So that one's, that would be a good. Four colon 170 is the safety of any policy in footnote nine. States at least 180 be present in all defendant centers. We already have that. We have that already in Congress and some even more than the. If I have questions, please stop me and let me know if you have any questions or anything. And I wanna read all these to you, but like I said, I wanna hit the main ones. The five 10,000 personnel on page two there, equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. Prevents discrimination based on employees' reproductive health decisions. So don't assign issue with us, but it's something I think we just need to be aware of. Also, prohibits employer from using AI in a manner that subjects employees to unlawful discrimination. Stephen and Cindy and I spoke about that. I don't have an example of that. I'm not sure where that, how that would work, but we'll continue to.
There's, yeah, there's AI mechanisms now that individuals, when they interview. So say you're doing a Zoom interview or a video interview, whatever, and you'll record the interviewee and then AI will spit out reports on that.
Understood.
So there's, that's the example of what that would be.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Number five, full and 90, abusing and neglecting child reporting. This removes requirement from our staff to have to confirm or oral reports in writing to DCFS. So a pastor may have to write it down. We don't have to do that now. I still think it's a good practice for us because if we record it, it keeps track of what happened for us to do the recruitment. So, but it doesn't have to be. The next one just changed wording verbal. All right, go ahead and turn to page three if you would. The instruction under six colon 60, curriculum and content requires boards to implement or opt out of career exploration and development activities in grade six through 12 in accordance with state framework and college and career athlete endorsement. But by July 1, 2025, the recommendation, I let them know that my recommendation, they agreed, is that we implement, we don't do that. We've already had two, and it says one. And since I did this, we actually have two now that have been approved of our career pathways. We have two more that are waiting to be approved. So we've already started this process. I think it's a good one. It's lengthy. I believe there's gonna be some adjustments to it as time goes. But I think we're in a good spot with that. It also talks about adding a few things to Brad Brad, which is worker safety and having constructive construction. Going over dangers of fentanyl, used to be nine through 12, but adding that to six through 12. And then the last one is instructing on climate change beginning of 26, 27. The six colon 135 Accelerated Placement Program, if you remember in the past, if a student met or exceeded in their, on their, in their state test, they would move automatically to the next highest class. That can now change. They, I thought about that and it's just exceeds now. It could change again, but for now, it's just exceeds. We'll be changing that. So that is one that's changing too. The next one is the seven colon 180, just changing sexual harassment to sexual discrimination and changing. Last page. I'm going over community relations. So this addresses government official speech on social media. So for example, if I go and say something on my social, I put something on my Facebook, my personal one, and it is, has to do with the school. It can go back to me as not being, my first right amendment might be in jeopardy because I'm an authority in the district because I'm superintendent and I have the, I use that as a way to express my opinion. So it's just kind of addressing that. I believe that's kind of just the blanket way to cover that. But it goes back to a Supreme Court, US Supreme Court case, lengthy versus brief in 2024. So again, quick rundown of those. I'd be glad to send them to you if you'd like, but there's more than that. That is true. Shrunk version. And there's still some more that I left off there. So be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, now let's do roll call.
Yes.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Yes. Facilities improvement?
Yeah, just quickly on the facilities improvement. And we're to the point now where a lot of the stuff that we've been working on is completed or getting completed. So this will probably be my last one for a while that I really get because we run out of things to talk about. But they just, especially with the situation with the IS, where it changes where we're at right now. The flag finally, the 40-foot flag pole finally got installed after four or five months. It is in and in and there. It's driven by the baseball diamond. They had also taken off the old mound that was the wrong color. And hopefully by the end of this week, excuse me, they'll be adding the new one that's the right color. So that should be done. And really, that kind of closes up where we're at right now. Like I said, I think right now the rest is on pause. If I was on pause, we won't be giving more updates because I'll be telling you the same thing. So that's where I, but definitely answer any questions and entertain those.
You got that base softball thing.
Softball base. Thank you. You know what? I'll have to check into that. I know we talked about it with Mr. Racy, but I don't know where we're at with it.
It's just, you need a double base. You can't start a game without a double base and the one that's offered just a single. So before we get into the season.
Yeah.
By rule, you're not supposed to.
So with that change of the mold worries me a little bit, but let's keep fingers crossed with this kind of weather. I hate to see that.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll be all right. A little bit of a concern there.
And maybe it's, and it's five pieces that go together.
Yeah, it is.
And maybe that hopefully will. Maybe wait till it's better weather, so.
Or wait for the coverage to kill it. And I mean, you have the pieces together. It's just, well, we'll see. We'll see what happens. Okay, anything else on that then?
No.
All right, then let's move on to new business. And I will entertain a first and second motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the CCC UEA slash IEA slash NEA Teachers Union as presented. How Sean so moves and Dan seconds.
Just real quickly, if you remember, we talked, this is with most of you, this is just saying we gave the intermediate school staff on Monday. This is just MOU stating, it is not a precedent-setting event. It's a one-time thing. Union has agreed to sign this too. Just because it was a agreement, we needed to make sure we got it approved.
And it was nice to you to thank you, not only for my work.
You did. Yes, you are. That's right. Thanks for sharing.
Yes.
That was nice. Nice. Okay, roll call, please, a woman.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes. Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Ken Miller.
Yes. Okay, the next motion then is something that we do every year. I will entertain a first and second motion to approve payment of the annual membership of $290 to the Grand Economic Chamber of Commerce. Quinn so moves and Dan seconds. Roll call, please, a woman.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes. Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And Miller.
Yes. And again, the next one is just, again, something we do every year. I'll entertain a first and second motion to approve the membership renewal of the free educational partnership for 2024 to 2025. The name of it's $750. Steve so moves. Dan seconds.
Same thing. We just appreciate all the support we get from all these groups to the jobs that they do to help our, our students, our communities as well.
Absolutely. Roll call, please, a woman.
Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Jefferson. Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes. Ken Miller.
Yes. Okay, you wanna talk about the maintenance?
Yes, so this is something, appreciate Jason's effort on this. We applied for it. He just sent that in. And it's to help pay for the intermediate school. It is a $50,000 matching grant. So we just applied for that. It's just letting the board know that that's been put in place. Our good button, ready to do it for it.
Good. Take every sum we can give or move it.
Absolutely.
Okay, then I will entertain a first and second motion to approve payment of the annual membership fee of $300 to the Grand Economic Development Council. Cindy so moves and Steve seconds. Roll call, please, a woman.
Cindy Klein. Yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Jefferson. Danny.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Ken Miller.
Yes. Okay, any items not known at agenda time or any communication from the floor on items or anything in general? All right, and hearing done. At 6:28, I will entertain a first and second motion to wind this session for the purpose of considering information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline performance, or individual student issues and pending litigation. Quinn so moves and Dan seconds. Roll call, please, a woman.
Quinn Harmon.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Jefferson. Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes. Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Yes. Close things up.